Yeah.
Everybody, welcome to a regular meeting of the State Parb Board.
Oh, yes. Shara is out sick and our backup is out sick, so I'm. So I'll be going through these. So Judge Larson. Cindy Nocton. Daniel Herring. Greg Delaney. Dr. Parks.
Here.
Jonette, did she show up? Kaylee Kurt, Dr. Kurt.
Present.
Judge Edwards.
Here.
Lou Flanagan. Linda Whitney. Whitney. Melanie Johnson. Sarah Harian, did she make it in? Judge Dool.
Here.
David Ross is here. And. Deanna, I know is not coming. Girl Bridges is not coming. Judge Versteg could not make it. Judge Bayes could not make it. So we've got. We have 13, which is.
So we have some new members. We've got Linda Whitney, Judge Larson, and Randy Watts is down there somewhere. So if you don't mind, since we've got some new members, if we could go around and kind of say who we are and tell us a little bit about yourself. So our new members know. I'll start. I'm Greg Delaney. I'm the current Chair of this Board and I'm the OJA guy that's appointed to this Board.
Deputy Director of OJA. He's not the OJA guy.
I'm Lou Flanagan from Claremore Rogers County Parb. 14 years with Child Protective Services and 18 years with the National Resource, OU National Resource Center for Youth Services.
Hi, I'm Kaylee Kurt. I'm from Weatherford. I'm a pharmacist at Southwestern College of Pharmacy, but I'm also here representing foster parent with an agency and I serve on the commission for this Board as well.
Hey, Melanie Johnson, At Large. Wanted a hot minute.
I'm Leah Edwards. I'm the District Judge for Garbutt in McLean County. I'm Cindy Nocton. I'm from Lawton and I am with the Post Judication Review Board in Lawton and serve on the State Child Death Review Board here under OCC.
I'm Brandy Watts. I'm the nurse practitioner at the Civil Center in Stillwater. Also, the, I'm on the Payne County Parb. I'm the chairperson for that.
Lou Dool, I'm the Associate District Judge in Logan County.
Kristy Larson, I'm Associate District Judge in Savannah County.
Whitney, I am the Chair for the Delaware County Parb and started the Ottawa County Parb. Hopefully I won't be on that forever. Until they get enough.
I'm Linda Herring, the DHS Rep and Assistant Chaval Director. And Linda Foster texted me last night and said, make sure I introduce myself to you.
I'm Greg Parks, currently an At Large member. I started out as a local parb member, served on local parbs. I'm a psychologist and worked with, in the Chaval for juvenile justice system.
I'm David Ross. I'm an At Large member, which is a nice way to say nothing special. Been on board for, I don't know, 10, 12 years, something like that. I'm a foster and adoptive parent, so originally from Durant and live in Oklahoma City the last few years.
And everybody knows Keith.
Yeah, I think I know everybody. Keith Purtle, I'm your staff person. Hey, sir.
Could you use a quick introduction, Sarah? We've got some new members.
Well, sure. Sarah Harian, Executive Director of the Foster Association of Oklahoma.
Well, welcome new members and thanks to the old members that showed up today so we could have this meeting. Parb is an important piece of the child-serving system in Oklahoma. I think it's an important job to support us. So welcome, everybody, and thank you for coming today. We do have a quorum, so the meeting can continue. Review and approval of the minutes of October 22nd, 2021, our advisory board meeting, discussion and possible action. Everybody got a copy of the minutes from Keith's email? Is there any discussion or if not, it's something like to pose a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
One second.
You have a motion in a second. Keith, could you call the role, please?
Sure. Just vote yes or no, please. Brandy Watts.
Yes.
Judge Larson.
Yes.
Amy Nocton.
Yes.
Daniel Herring.
Yes.
Greg Delaney.
Yes.
Josh Parks.
Yes.
Jonette, Donna is still not here. Kaylee, Dr. Kurt.
Yes.
Judge Edwards.
Yes.
Lou Flanagan. Linda Whitney. Melanie Johnson.
Yes.
Sarah Harian.
Yes.
Judge Dool.
Yes.
Minutes are passed.
Thank you. Item four, kids aging out of child welfare custody. We've got a presentation from Assistant Director Daniel Herring.
Keith didn't think I could do this in 20 minutes, so I better. Here, in case. So I went back and we looked at the data just over the last four fiscal year, state fiscal years. So that runs July 1st through June 30th. And then we're at the first six months of this fiscal year. And so you can see the raw numbers there and then the percentage. So going back to like 2018, 214 children aged out without legal permanency. So of all the kids who exited that year, that made up 4% of that population. And so majority of the kids, of course, they exit care due to adoption or reification. A smaller percentage guardianship or best relative. You see in 19, it had a significant decrease to 169, to 3%. This was your 20, 154, 4%. And then this year 21, we went back and saw a decrease, 192 or 5% of the total exits were due to kids aging out. And then so far this fiscal year, 96, the first six months, at 5%. So on the same track, if we continue on this trend, in around 180, 190, the end of this year. So the good news, does it look like we'll see a significant jump again, but kind of stay the same? So kind of what do we know about this population that ages out? So with our pinnacle plan, we focus on a certain cohort of kids within this population and not as kids who are legally free when they turn 16. So they enter a certain cohort that we give some patent focused attention to because then we've got, of course, two years to achieve permanency for them. And, and the hot focus is really due to they're legally free. So we know that, you know, there's not a goal of going back home at that time. And so they're kind of at greater risk of aging out because they either have a goal of adoption, guardianship, plan alternative permanent placement. So in the last six months or so, we took a sample of that cohort and really tried, like, what do we know about this population? Like, what are the struggles, barriers? Like, we have anecdotal feedback, you know, our experienced staff in the cases working with youth, but what does the data show us? So this is some of the results from us doing that deeper dive into those cases and seeing what were some common factors. And so one thing we know is that youth that experience from 16 to 18, if they experience no moves or one move on their 60th birthday, they're more likely to achieve permanency. So it just makes sense. Kids that move more frequently are less likely to achieve legal permanency. And one big influence we saw on this population was that youth who came to care due to abandonment, either abandonment by their birth parent, a guardian, the adoptive parent, they're less likely to achieve legal permanency once they come into the system. I think we see. I think we see situations where those, where those kids, they're shared through the child welfare system, the OJA system, our post adoption services starting to work with them, instead of a parent, but for whatever reason, they come back in. If the youth has a mental health diagnosis or disability, that can strongly impact the likelihood of achieving legal permanency prior to them turning 18. Another big factor that we saw is if the youth experiences psychiatric stays while in care, that impacts their ability, their likelihood, rather, to achieve legal permanency. So if they've had more than one stay in a psychiatric facility, then it decreases the likelihood they'll exit to legal permanency. And so that last paragraph, that just kind of summarizes some of those main factors that we saw. So kind of what are we doing about it with NDHS? So since December of 16, we have implemented a strategy. So if a teenager is 13 and older, sounds like or may come into custody, then those cases are staffed with the district director in those counties. And so the purpose of that is really to look at, okay, because of their age, are they as vulnerable as the younger child? Do they need to come into care? Is there another way that we can remove the safety threat and not remove the child? It's just different depending on the functioning of that teenager, of course, but it's different when you're talking about a 17-year-old, 16-year-old compared to a two-year-old. And so we really had to get a handle on like, are the right kids, so to speak, coming into care? Are those the kids that really need to be served in the foster care system? In August of 2020, we put into place for kids 15 and 17. So this is for all youth. They don't have to be legally free. But 15 to 17, if there's a kinship identified and at the local level, the worker supervisor, they wanted to know that kinship that's elevated to their district director or the field manager for foster care. And if that team is still like, yeah, I think we need that, then it goes to the regional deputy director and the deputy director for foster care and adoptions. If they still like, yeah, I think we need an eye or, you know, this is a tricky one, then they staff with me and we go from there. And so again, the reason for that is if trying to get them stabilized, kids are more stable. If they, if you let them go where they want to be, for one, more stable with family and kin. And also the message to the field, like, you're not in this alone. Like, some of these are risky situations and risky decisions. And so hopefully they feel the support of leadership, like, we're in it with you. Like, we're not going to ask you to approve something on one hand, you don't feel comfortable doing or knowing that, I mean, you've got, you know, three, four layers of leadership involved in making this decision. And so I didn't look, I mean, actually, we just staffed one yesterday and he's 16 and we're approving grandpa. And so I would say all the ones that come to me, about 60-something percent are approved. And then the others that we stick with it and I'll, so that kind of gives you a range of it. And we're talking about a small population. I mean, maybe since August 22, you know, maybe 40 teenagers fall in this category. So they're very unique situations. The case plan goal of plan alternative permanent placement. So again, it's, you know, elevating, getting more people involved. So if it's for a 16-year-old, before we approve that plan, the district director is also involved. If it's for a 17-year-old, the regional director and myself are also involved. And the purpose of that is really how we exhausted efforts for adoption, guardianship, criminal reading statement. Have we looked at, you know, everything, try to unpack why the youth is saying no, doesn't want to be adopted or look at some permanency options? You can see there is a snapshot at the end of the last calendar year. So three youth aged 16 had that goal and 33 youth who were aged 17 had the goal. And any of you who've been around for any length of time, and we see you have hundreds and hundreds of kids with this goal in the system. So we build. We built a internal multidisciplinary staffing last year. Well, actually, towards the end of 2020, we got them kind of all up and running by spring 2021. And so, so for any legally free youth, 15 to 17, we have a regional person who leads these multi-level staffings. So these multi-level staffings are utilized for kids who are in a shelter setting. That's where we started with that population, like staying focused on them. How do we exit from the shelter, get them into a foster care setting? And then, so we've incorporated now this, this population of youth who are 15, 17 legally free. Again, giving them some patent focused attention. You know, if you're the worker, sometimes you can get so bogged down in the day-to-day, it's hard to step back and see the big picture. Because, I mean, you're just trying to figure out where you're going to place this kid next sometimes. And so again, hopefully they feel the support of, you know, an entire team in making some of these decisions. So we have leadership on these calls, a child welfare nurse can be on there, mental health expert, the tribe, foster care, permanency, adoptions. I mean, the kind of core team for each of these teams, there's probably about 20-something members in addition to when the worker supervisors come on for their specific youth that they're staffing. And for a family meetings conducted for all legally free youth within 30 days of their 17th birthday. Again, you know, we kind of got a year left, so let's pull out all the stops, what we can look at, you know, try to achieve legal permanency and also look at relational permanency. All legally free youth, doesn't matter their age, if they're legally free, they don't have an identified permanency option. So they have two workers assigned and two supervisors assigned to them. They have the permanency worker who's, you know, they're the ones going to court still, responsible for placements for the most part. And then we have a youth transition specialist. So with the youth transition specialist, they're trained, yes, on the next one. So they're trained on the evidence-based models when he's smaller for kids. So that's from the Davis Thomas Foundation. And really the spirit and the heart of that model is all about family finding efforts. There's eight different components to it. You know, when they first get the assignment, they're doing a case mining. So they're looking through the records and they're trying to pull out any possible kinship option, relative or non-relative. They're trying to find any names at all, pulling that, pulling those out. They're building a relationship with the youth, interviewing the youth about who they want to be with, who they want to live with. They identify as family, who's part of their immediate circle. And they should be interviewing like the cost of volunteer, the child's attorney, the permanency worker, the foster parents, anyone that's kind of already in on the child's team, interviewing them, begin trying to identify any sort of kinship. And so additional efforts to increase legal permanency for them. So we just launched a mandatory online training called Permanency for Teens Training. And so we, for any staff who works with youth 14 and older, it's a required training for the workers and the supervisors. And then those next bullet points are kind of just the main topics within that training. So why actively seeking connections are called ASK. And so that's what we termed kind of all family finding efforts fall under that. And so it talks about like, it starts at the hotline when we receive a referral. They're asking about the family supports. So those could be potential kin if that child comes into care. With CPS, when they're talking to collaterals and interviewing them, typically some of them are going to be family members. So again, you're thinking kinship supports if the child comes into care. And so how do you, it never stops when the child comes into care. Is the message always looking for kin and family? Even if they're placed with kin, like, do you have a backup? Do you have another relative that the child potentially go with? And the, the training outlines resources for staff to use to identify, locate, engage a teen's family connections. And it talks about benefits teens may be eligible for as they transition into adulthood. We'll hear more about that next. And then it talks about reasons why teens may opt against legal permanency and the ways our staff can continue to engage them with those permanency discussions. So in the last two years now, we looked at a lot about COVID impact. And so this is what we've gathered for this population, particularly the older teens. And so some of the youth were less engaged with virtual therapy compared to in-person therapy based on their preference. Especially during 2020, so youth in concrete care settings, I think, were the most impacted because, I mean, it kind of spread like wildfire in the concrete care settings, groups among the staff, among the youth. So you would see kind of, say lockdown, but restrictions rather come in there. Like, we had a pivot to workers, we're doing virtual worker visits with them. Not as many outings, passes for youth, which is going to impact their social well-being. So we do see it had the greatest impact on them because they tend to start losing hope that they're not getting out, they're not seeing people in person. You guys know that some of the youth, some of their main connections, whether good or bad, is like their worker, their cost of volunteer, their attorney come to see them. And when that was moved to virtual for a whole period of time, it can impact them. Let's see if anything else. So obviously this can impact, like I mentioned, their well-being and their placement stability, which then impacts their legal and relational permanency. So the. So with this act came from the feds in December 2020. So it, for all states in the nation, it did not require youth in DHS custody who's in foster care, leave foster care solely by the reason of him or her aging out before 10/1/21. And so also any youth who left foster care during, due to their age during COVID-19 pandemic was allowed to voluntarily return to foster care. And so it means, you know, historically, it's, okay, you're turning 18, you can sign yourself into voluntary care. If you're working on like your high school diploma, your GED. So this kind of just through all the window, like, hey, if you want to stay, you can stay. Basically, if you want to come back, you can come back. And so again, this is a snapshot, late December 2021, had 21 youth who were voluntary care. I would say even though this enacted, it's, as you probably imagine, it wasn't like we had this flood of youth. It was like, oh, yes, please, we'd like to return to y'all.
So these are kids who are just staying in the foster homes.
Mostly foster homes, and we have some like more short-term, like if it's in a concrete care settings. Like, we, we kind of get creative, like one aged out, was out of state, wanted to come back. So we paid to fly them back to Oklahoma. Some we put in a hotel for a couple of weeks to figure out, you know, getting them to transitional living plan. But anyway, the COVID dollars helped us do some of that.
And how long could they sign themselves back?
September 30th.
Yeah, but I think your question is like, if they came back, how long could they stay? They can stay till. Remember if it outline that.
It used to be they could sign back in and stay till they finished high school. And February, they could stay till 21. So it's all changed now.
No, we haven't changed it yet. I mean, there's discussion, I think, possible legislation about extending the voluntary period. But with this, I'm trying to remember, we settled on like, okay, you can come back, but you know, at 21 or 22, you have to leave. I don't think we, from the rest discussing them.
It was maybe till they just found new permanence or.
Yeah, because you're talking, plus, you know, like 20-something kids, give or take, depending on the time. I mean, it's a small group. So I think the ones I've been involved in, it's like, we're working with them to, you know, help get them to where they need to be. If it's transitional living, if they're going to stay in the foster home. So for me, anyway, I haven't heard it come up like, oh, you came back, you're in COVID and now you're, you know, a certain age or your time is up, so.
It gives you a few more months or whatever to finish something, I guess, is what you're basically trying to do.
Yeah, well, with the COVID thing, I mean, it was about making sure they weren't homeless.
Right.
Anything like that. I mean, they were getting evicted and different things.
Get them some love.
So COVID, you know, some of the stuff did give us more dollars, so that's a good thing. And so what do we do with those COVID dollars? And so we can see on here, like, we paid rate utility payments. And so we paid leases for over 200 youth, which gave them six to 12 months. Six to 12 months more housing, pay for medical expenses, food, clothing. Over 400 youth received payments for car payments, purchased vehicles, pay for cell phones, data cards, laptops. And so in December, all youth in care 14 to 17 received a $300 Visa gift card. And so we didn't have to like, give us all the receipts back, tell us what you spent on, it's like, here's your $300. So that was nice too for us. So and then there's only going in for strengthened partnerships within the community and provide long-term solutions to housing shortage. And so we're working on a long-term partnership with Pivot and their tiny house community to help kids who are aging out. And then we have until September 30th of this year to use the remainder of the funding.
Where's your tiny home community?
Good question. I don't know.
They're here in the city.
These are helping out.
Are the ones at Pivot? I'm seeing those before. Yeah, they're just off of 50th, right, where used to be Youth Services. A lot of people change names, throws them.
Probably, yeah. Yeah, that's neat, but they're very.
So kind of next steps for us, we continue to build a continuum of care in DHS. And so what that means is where's a child place? So that's all the way from when a child enters their care, meet on your lowest level via kinship, foster care, therapeutic foster care, enhanced foster care, which I'll touch on. If they're in a group home, shelter, it's like, where does that child move within the system and how do we strengthen that? Where you got less kids going to those higher levels of care, less kids moving a lot, and they can stay in family-based settings. And so enhanced foster care, it is still being built within DHS. I'm sure most of you are familiar with therapeutic foster care that we've contracted with providers for decades. And so enhanced foster care is kind of our version of that, our in-house version, if you will. And so we predict from our analysis, we'll serve about 800 kids in this program. And so it's a strong partnership with DMH and the. That's set criteria of how youth can meet enhanced foster care. And we set that criteria. And so I'll just tell you, it's pretty broad. Like, basically, the kid needs it, kid gets it. And it can be in kinship homes, in non-relative homes. And so it's very short timeframes of when, okay, you're approved, the family says, yes, I'll do enhanced foster care. And so we work with departmental health to get the initial meeting done with departmental health, with us, with the family, with the workers involved. Start developing that treatment plan for the child and family. They receive our highest level of difficult care payments. They have that 24/7 access to a therapist through the DMH. And it's, then we have the first kind of family meeting, all the team members. And then thereafter, every six days, we're having a family meeting again. I'd like, how's it working? Is the crisis prevention plan working? Sarah, you could probably talk about it more too. Anything else I'm missing?
No, it's an incredible program. I think it's helped a lot of families and saved a lot of placements, which I think has been probably the most beneficial.
I'd say the spirit of it is trying to get services in immediately and quickly. I mean, that's what we know historically is where we've made referrals for services. It's delayed or 60 days later and the foster parents like, really help me. You know, I'm at my wit's end, you know, that sort of thing. And so still being built, so to speak, but I think we're serving 400 or so kids in this room. Can we give any numbers?
Yeah, I can't believe it. The number is surprising just because it's still really is. Just because it's such, it's so accessible for a lot of families. So a lot of people are saying, hey, I want that, I want more help, I want more reference sources, so.
So we're good. So it's looking good so far. Seen some good results. So we're, we continue to explore parental reinstatement, family finding efforts and staying focused on trying to increase the youth in custody due to abandonment.
I thought a little bit, I'm sorry, I know your tone's up. And why are we seeing such negative impacts on abandoned children? I don't, I mean, I don't, it shocks me a little as opposed to sexual abuse or physical abuse or something like that. We're seeing the abandonment play such a big role. Do you, do you have any idea about that?
I mean, entirely from just staffing the cases, because like I said, it showed up in the data, like, what are the factors present? And they did have me included, like, you know, where they removed due to, what type of neglect were they removed to, due to? And then sexual abuse, like, we had all those. And so I think from second of cases, like, especially if they're older teens that come into abandonment, they're like, I don't want to, you know, like, I've been hurt, especially if it's by an adoptive parent or leaving guardian. Like, I've already been adopted, look what happened, you're trying to introduce me to new adoptive parents now. A lot of times what we see too is they'll come in due to abandonment. And then the, the adoptions is off, guardianship is off. So like the, the option of going back to that family is removed through the legal system. And so then that's where we see a lot of the youth too of trying to unpack that note, like, yes, we know you've been hurt, but trying to, trying to help them look towards the future. Like, I'm 16 now, but when you're 26, you're going to need to call somebody still. Like, permanency doesn't stop at 18. Like, you're still going to need support. Like, who are you going to call if you either have a flat on the side of the road? Or who's going to be there, you know, when you graduate college, who's going to sit out there in the audience? Who's going to walk me down the aisle, you know, those sort of things? So that's the conversations I hear about from the youth, that like, it's, they've been hurt and they don't want to be hurt again.
And because I was, I wasn't thinking about those kids that are voluntarily relinquished to the custody of the youth. So I was thinking mainly of kids whose parents left them in the house to go get drugs. So you know what I mean? I wasn't, I wasn't, I wasn't thinking about those kids that a placement didn't work or an adoption didn't work. Yeah, that is, I see that now. And I think a lot of those kids have attachment disorders too, to play into it.
I'll be honest, for me, like, my patience is thin, especially when it's a birth parent. I feel like it's hard for me to wrap my head around it. Try not, you know, judge the situation, but at the same time, I'm like. Like, yeah, so anyway, I struggle with that. You know, full transparency. Yeah. So that's what we have on here, you know, really looking at our post adoption services. I mean, Sarah can attest to this too. I mean, there's work to be done there to improve.
It's failed you twice, you know, you've been given a price. You have to stay.
I do have one quick question on the enhanced foster care. I know there's qualifications, but do youth kind of have that option first? Or is there different qualifiers to get enhanced foster care?
They're very minimal.
I guess as a foster parent, we get a lot of hesitation. It's like, I'm not going to take a teen, I don't have any support. How we can say, no, there's more, and here's how you could qualify for this. And maybe that's something I can just get the information about. How we can say, no, there's more, and here's how you could qualify for this. And maybe that's something I can just get the information about. I, I think enhanced foster. The moment I have found that foster parents even mention to their workers, it's ninety-nine percent of the time, they, they start the paperwork. It's really, I mean, the qualifications are really minimal and it's such a great program and the resource. If, I, I think the biggest barrier is probably if the resources aren't in that smaller community, then EFC isn't, isn't really an added benefit, because you're not really getting additional therapies and things like that, because there just aren't any. But, uh, if anything, you'll get the, um, increase, um, stipend, uh, that will help drive, you know, gas money, things like that. But, uh, that, I, I see that really being the only barrier to this program. I just think, I think everybody should be in EFC, really. I think all these kids, the trauma that they come from, I mean, I think.
So it just means there's more counseling available, there's more.
There's more like wrapper for the whole family. So it's like, it's just looking at the whole picture. And the teen is bigger, there's more people in the whole system, it's just.
Okay, okay.
So what, what became more robust for, um, adoptive, post-adoption? So I saw that up there in the end, because I know that a lot of them felt like once they adopted, the hell, there was nothing. No help, so what?
That's on the next steps.
Well, I saw that be on the very last thing up there, and I was going to ask you like, I remember that, like, I felt like they had no support once adopted, even though, you know, they could get therapy and stuff, I felt like they felt abandoned in the state.
And I know the thing we're talking about is like, I think EFC. Post-adopted families, and then also child reification families, I think it's good to TR. Because I did pull up the list for like EFC service elements. So you have the individualized treatment plan, regular team meetings about treatment, monthly in-home worker visits, weekly individual therapy for the child, family therapy, twenty-four hour courses that are mentioned, including crisis plan, the supplemental foster care rate, um, which is level five, the highest rate we got. The evidence-based treatment models, inappropriate, uh, service and support plan, that's created an entire team, an additional training for families, care for children, complex needs. And then for criteria, for a child fitting to the criteria, it's, like I said, it's pretty broad. Like, if they're in a shelter, they're automatically approved. If they move frequently, they're automatically approved. If they have a mental health diagnosis, approved.
Um, I feel like it's, it's also like a, an additional, uh, it's a, it's a kind of an increase for the foster parent. It kind of gives you a boost, um, okay, all right, we've gotten this, you know, I have people around me, everyone understands how difficult this is. It gives them, even if it's mental, you know, like not to that point.
Right, yeah.
I would, and I would say too, so we talked about like the elevated kinship decisions for the teens. And so, um, if I'm involved every single one, then I remind them like, F, EFC referral. Because again, those, if I'm involved, it's gonna be a more riskier situation and things like that. So try to get services in place immediately from the kid and the youth.
Any other questions for Mr. Harry? Kudos to you and your team for putting forth this Herculean effort to try to get services to the highest acuity kids in the system. You know, we all know who they are and kids that are most at risk, trying to pull out all the stops and to get some services that will make a meaningful transition. And the numbers are, are low. I mean, obviously it's working.
Yeah, that's, I mean, this is a, you're talking about such a small population, it's hard, it's challenging and difficult, but it's definitely not a vacuum. We can't do it without everyone else on the table.
It's a great effort, appreciate it. Uh, item number five, youth in custody committee report. Nicole George, the community planner, Eddie Sisania, the transition coordinator.
And I get, I'm happy to just stand here, that way I don't kind of crowd everybody over there. I've got Katie here that's gonna help me out. I'm Nicole George, I'm with planning coordination here at OCCY. And one of the committees that we convened is our strengthening youth custody and transition services advisory committee. And I kind of, following up from Daniel, that was, I mean, amazing to see how hard DHS is working on permanency and especially for these older youth. Um, our committee kind of tends to deal with what happens when we still have some of those five percent, four percent that are, that are aging out and trying to get them support services. Um, and it's in our statute that we focus, OCCY statute, that we focus on this transition age population that's either been in SC with DHS or with OJA maybe. Um, our committee is made up of all kinds of, uh, different child serving agencies, usually state agencies. Um, Oaks is definitely a strong supporter and participator. Um, we have OJA staff there, we have DRS. Um, ODMH is also there, then we have a lot of the child supporting, uh, systems, um, or employment, education, those types of needs that, uh, youth need when they're turning eighteen to that successful adulthood kind of model. Um, we, I'm new to OCCY and right as I was coming on in September, we had a strategic planning session with our committee that has given us a wonderful direction for twenty twenty-two. And so that's where you see some of these initiatives up here that came from, um, that planning session. And so, uh, Katie offered to talk just a little bit about what that looked like for us and how the work groups, uh, came about.
Hello, my name is Katie Sisania. For those that don't know me, I am the transition coordinator for the Oklahoma Successful Adult Food Program, or better known as Oaks. Um, I had the pleasure of being on that meeting in September. And what we did is we all kind of just decided, what do our young people need to be successful, especially those transition age youth? Those ones that are gonna exit care when they're eighteen, um, what do they need? So we came up with all these different ideas, um, housing, employment, essential documents. And what we did is we categorized, categorized them into three different initiatives. As you can see, the mentoring, the essential documents and the policy. I am very, very passionate about our transition age youth, this cohort of youth. So I decided I wanted to be a part of the essential documents, um, work group. And what we're looking at is, um, we have a concern that there are some young people that are aging out of care without these essential documents. That's to include an original R-certified birth certificate, original R-certified social security card and some form of state ID. And without these essential documents, that can cause barriers for our young people when they transition. Um, so if you don't have a social security card and a birth certificate, you can't obtain an ID. Without an ID, it's hard for these young people to get employment, in some cases even housing. So without these essential documents, um, they're, have an increased risk at homelessness, incarceration, lack of education, a number of different things. So like I said, I'm very passionate about this cohort and also just creating equal opportunities for all of our young people, all these transition age youth to be successful. So our very first step is to just see, how can we fix this issue, this concern? What can we do to help it and just create those equal opportunities? So that's what we're working on in, in that work group.
And I didn't know that Jonathan was gonna be here today. Can I pip on you a little bit, Jonathan? He was on our mentoring work group. Would you like to talk a little bit about, uh, what that process was like?
Guys, I was told not to speak here, so.
Well, in that case, well, we'll follow your, follow your lead. I'll, I'll just take over then. So Jonathan was part of our mentoring, and, uh, Jonathan, do you mind if I share that, um, that this is a lived experience for him? He, he's a former foster youth, and so he's been through that process, had an amazing mentor that has made a, a large difference in his life and has continued to support him. So it's an issue very close to his heart and is helping on that, that mentoring work group. Sorry to put you on the spot like that. And thank you, Katie, for, um, talking about the needs of these kids, because a, as I was, you know, four or five percent might seem like a small amount, but, um, and these are national numbers, but that's, you know, about twenty percent of that four or five percent are automatically homeless upon aging out. Um, that four or five percent represents about thirty to forty percent of our homeless youth. Um, so we, we work a lot with the COCs and making sure that they have support services to, um, be able to come out of homelessness. So, um, you can see just some of the things that each of the work groups have identified that were important to them. Um, I'm just gonna highlight, there's a lot of information there, I won't go through each and every bullet, so I'm just gonna highlight some of them. Uh, mentoring, we're really looking on, uh, getting a statewide, uh, standardized training that is specifically targeted for, um, the, the needs of youth that have been in custody. So that's something that we're really working with, or those, uh, ju, uh, those, um, vulnerable populations even further so that have been in custody. Uh, and then the essential documents, just like Katie was able to highlight, you know, we're seeing a lot of our kids coming out. And the reason why they're going into homelessness is because they don't have the identification to be able to get things like employment and housing and to be able to, um, sustain their own or be self-sufficient that way. Um, and then our policy, we're really working on food security and financial empowerment. And what this means is we're, we've had a great partnership with adult family services, um, talking with leadership there about how can we get these children, these youth, um, enrolled in SNAP as they're leaving custody, uh, because we know a lot of times, once they're out, we have a hard time getting a hold of them. They are working, um, to maybe come up with a process where they have a, a one worker that works with all four hundred or so youth that are either coming out of OJA or DHS, so that they can help them get their, um, eligibility application completed and their interview. That's a two-step process that usually is done at different times, but they're gonna streamline that to where they can do that at, in one appointment uh, for our youth to get them, um, signed up with SNAP. We're also looking at obtaining a, um, for those that are employment age, getting them their own bank account. So we know that not every, uh, youth that is in a placement maybe has a great relationship. Again, I'm gonna tell a little bit of Jonathan's story, because, um, he had a, a foster parent that helped him get a, a bank account set up. But now he can't get that foster parent's name off of that bank account, because they live in another state. So we want them to be able to have that bank account either in their name or with some other kind of custodial agent that will roll up, will, um, grow off by the time that they turn eighteen. And along with that, we're looking at financial literacy training, individual development accounts that might have some matching funds for them, that if they put certain amount in savings and they get a matching amount back. Um, in all of our work groups, we are focusing on those with lived experience, hearing from those that have been in care and what it was like for them, what they wish that they had, what they needed, and bring the ones that are closest to the problem, closest to the solution. So, um, if any questions about, I'm a fast talker, I know, I just kind of blew through that. All right, thanks for letting us tell you guys all about strengthening youth custody.
Thanks for participating, appreciate it. Uh, item number six, transition youth issues identified by Oaks and Jeff Walls.
You guys mind if I just stay up here or you won't be up here?
That'd be better for the camera if you didn't mind.
Camera, sorry guys.
I didn't notice you were halfway through.
So, uh, first off, this is, uh, anytime I get an opportunity to spend a couple of hours in a room full of people that are just pass, passionate about this population design, it's a good day. I mean, we're in the society, we set this up on Friday, who knows, that person is a great way to close out the week. So, uh, my, my name is Jeff Walls and I'm the, the programs manager for the Oklahoma Successful Adulthood Program. And specifically the education and training doctorate program. That's a scholarship for youth who experience foster care after the age of sixteen. So we have about, at any given time, a hundred and sixty-ish, uh, youth who have exited foster care through adoption or internship or have aged out and are now attending college or tech school or something like that. Our program runs to about twenty-six years old, they're able to stay in there. We've actually had people go through our program, uh, extend all the funding, achieve a bachelor's degree, a master's degree, and now they're in doctoral. So, um, I, I take no credit for that. This is all on these students. They're, they're, they're awesome, the, the things they're able to overcome and, uh, it's, it's incredible. So I'm glad to be a part of that. I'm also very proud to be a part of the Oklahoma County Parb Transition Age Review Board. So that's, that's very exciting for me. Um, I want to circle back to Daniel's presentation. Uh, there's some great stuff in that and, and, uh, from my position, I'm very hopeful, um, very proud of the direction the agency's going in this arena and, um, looking forward to it. The, the, the COVID cash or COVID dollars, I've never heard it referred to as that, but that's, that was, that was an awesome thing. And, uh, I just want to say, I think Oklahoma did an amazing job of quickly processing that funding, figuring out what direction to go with it and, and putting it to action, really getting it in the hands of these young people. Uh, we paid a lot of rent, we bought a lot of cars, we, uh, we helped a lot of folks out, um, to knock out a full twelve-month lease. Uh, you could not imagine the relief that some of these youth felt from that. So, um, we still got big plans for that money. Uh, I know, uh, Daniel mentioned the Tiny Homes Project, we're very, uh, much looking forward to that. So, um, when I was thinking about what I wanted to share with you guys today, I, I reflected a lot on the conversations I've had with, um, youth who have aged out of care over the past two years. Just through contacts with, um, students in choir about the ECD program and just general calls to Oaks and things like that. And, uh, I always believe that the, the best source of information on the quality of our product as far as our programs and the delivery of our services comes directly from these young people and their feedback, uh, describing how this benefits them. How, and sometimes it's creating barriers and, and how to overcome those barriers. Uh, so through those conversations, um, I really wanted to talk about six major topics that, that kind of reemerged. And I'm not gonna beat this one to death, but, um, Katie mentioned the essential documents. I think she rounded that out really well. I think we all, we're all aware that as, you know, as an adult, that's kind of your passport, if you will, to adulthood, you can't do a whole lot without that. So, thank you for mentioning that, Katie. Uh, number two is education. And I want to talk about placement changes during the academic school year. A placement change can, can set a student back six months when it comes to school, just one placement change. If that placement change occurs during the school year and involves a school change as well, then we've got big problems. We could actually miss out on an entire year. Um, so I, the agency recognizes this. Um, there's several efforts in place to, to create, uh, stable placements as far as resources, things like that. So we, we are focusing on that. Um, but, but that is a, an issue that we do see as people are getting ready to turn eighteen and we're two years behind on education. So we've got, you know, we're trying to figure that out. A lot of that looks like, um, alternative school credit recovery, uh, or going to GED option, something like that. Again, that's, that's one of our, our focuses moving forward. Transportation is another big one. Um, how do I buy a car when I turn eighteen? They don't, uh, necessarily know how to use the public transportation system. There may not be a public transportation system in their area. So this is another issue of focus. Uh, general lack of, um, life skills, if you will. Uh, so how, we get a lot of, how do I, questions? How do I do this? Um, they'll, they'll call into those, the helpline, and it's not necessarily a monetary need, it's just more so, hey, I just got a job. How do I start a bank account so I can get the right deposit? You know, things, things like that. Um, housing is, is, is always a big issue for us, um, with our youth aging out of care, uh, especially ones who, who want to be independent and on their own. We encourage that, we want to find a way to do that. Sometimes this looks like our, our transitional living programs throughout Oklahoma. The issue with transitional living programs is we don't have a lot, there's certain requirements for them, there's an application process, and then space available, is, is another issue as well that we encounter. College dorms work really well for our students going in, yet we still need to plan for the break time, Christmas break, spring break, summer break, things like that. We need an alternative of where these youth are gonna go. Um, I feel like, um, our education unit were really successful and, and, and meeting that need in most cases. COVID was a little difficult, especially when it initially hit spring of twenty twenty, colleges closed, dorms closed, what are we gonna do, you know? Um, so that, that was a bit of a scramble. Um, a lot of our youth want to move into their own apartments and, and, uh, start off that way, which is great. Uh, through the Oaks program, we have a rapid housing model, uh, where that initially starts out, it's a six-month, ideal six-month program, where Oaks starts out paying the full amount of everything. The youth pays nothing, and over that period of six months, there's a gradual switch to where the youth is taking over full responsibility for that. So we do have students, or not students, but youth who are, uh, using, utilizing that program. Our housing vouchers, um, they're, they're a bit limited. And also the requirements for that, a lot of it's homelessness, they have to be homeless that day and things like that. So, uh, they're, and there's also a three to six-month-ish period, uh, to get those approved and get them into that. And then, uh, lastly, what I wanted to mention, you know, this, this may be one of the biggest ones on here. Uh, support networks, just in general, um, not only legally, uh, legal permanency, but, but, um, the relational permanency is a big, is a big issue for a lot of our, um, folks we, we talk with that, um, have exited care and, uh, they, they had a great plan. Didn't quite work out and they have no one to, to lean back on, there's no one there to help out, no supportive adults in their life. Um, so, so we're really focusing on fostering those, those relationships while they're in care and maintaining those. So, um, with, uh, kin and family, even if they're not appropriate for a placement, they're still appropriate to, to have as a family member. You know, have as a, as a contact to reach out to. Um, so I don't want to just give you guys a bunch of problems, so, so, so some, some solutions that agency's working on this. I think, I think this starts with, um, field training our employees, getting information out there to them. And we've got some great trainings in place. And we've got some great trainings in place. I think, I think it's going to bear fruit as we move forward here. So one of them is our CWS ten sixteen training. This is a two-day OCSA training. It's a level one training. So all of our new employees out of core go through this training. It's, it's in-depth. It covers a lot of OCSA stuff. The issue with this training. Is a new employee out of core, they're going to go through this and get all this information, yet they may not have a teen on their caseload until maybe a year or so. So this information, they may retain it, may not. But we did launch, as Daniel mentioned, the Permanency for Teens Training. Martha Ingraham, she's no longer here, but Katie Sissonia, myself, Jennifer Boyer. We worked really hard along with our other partners who actually built the website for the training to get that together. And this is an online LMS training that our staff go through and. They're able to obtain a lot of information right there. It's really pertinent and active for, for, for youth. We're launching a, another series of trainings. It's, we're calling it Ask OCSA. This is going to be online, like a Zoom type thing. That's going to occur monthly. And this is a, basically it's an open invitation to our field employees, placement providers and definitely the youth. Just to come in and ask questions and get answers like on the spot, point in time. We are going to work on presenting parts of OCSA during these. We don't want it to be like, you know, a full-on presentation. That gets repetitive. So we're going to just try to target bits and pieces to present during this as we move through the year each month. We are launching another Life Skills Reimagine. This is an online training. To build life skills for youth. This is going to be reoccurring monthly. This is going to be incentivized. So I, I find out the best way to get youth to engage is to pay them. So, so we're, we're working on a method to do that. And it's just going to be a series of different, different trainings throughout the year that they can, they can come in, they can attend and gain knowledge on those different life skills. We're currently working on a process to reframe our ninety-day transition plan. I don't know if you guys are familiar with those, but. This is a plan that occurs ideally three months out from that youth turning eighteen. And it's designed to look at their housing plans, their education plans, things like what's going to happen after care. The problem with this, with this, I want you guys to kind of put yourself in the youth's position. You're three months from turning eighteen and we're going to sit down and plan your adulthood life out in about an hour and a half with a, with a form. So that, that creates, creates issues right there. And a lot of times this. A lot, a lot of times this, this is, this is a successful because. The words got out that, you know, this process needs to start a little bit earlier as far as talking and planning and meetings and things like that. So we're, we're trying to just reframe this. As we're going to start at seventeen years old through a series of meetings building up to this ninety-day plan. And we want everybody to, at the table during these meetings. Their attorneys are great, workers are very foster parents, supportive adults, family, anybody that's going to be involved in these youths' life. After they exit care, you know, we want them there at this, at these meetings. This too will be incentivized. So to encourage the youth to, to fully engage. What I'm noticing about these ninety-day plans, if they're not youth-driven, if it's not their plan, it's not going to work. We can draw things up on paper all day long. If we don't have their buy-in, it's not going to work. So. That's, that's going to happen hopefully before this fall. We're going to have that mapped out and that'll be the process. We've already started. The communication with seventeen-year-olds early in regards to this ninety-day plan. We're already having those meetings. We just don't have the, the form revised yet. So we're working on that. We have a, currently we have an OCSA website up. The feedback we've, we've received back is, it's not overall user-friendly. It's a little difficult to kind of find some things. There's some things that youth are asking for to be on there that's not currently on there. So that is being reworked right now, probably as we speak. They're still working on that and that should launch this, this. I would say in February, that should be up. There's still going to be some adjustments made to it and some things added to it as we go. But that'd be a nice, nice place for youth to go. They can communicate directly with OCSA through there, get some resources, things of that nature. Youth Villages, a great partner of us, or for us, I should say. Our youth can start working with Youth Villages at age seventeen and a half and they can continue that. The targeted dosage, I believe it's nine, nine months ideally, but they can continue that up until the age of twenty-one. And Youth Villages, they meet with our kiddos weekly, I believe, yes, weekly. And they do anything from budget planning to housing planning, things like that. Just they, they start out, they do a really great assessment. Build a kind of a case goal plan of what the youth is looking for and just kind of work toward those goals as they go through that, that process. So another thing that we're, that's been in the works for a while is our judicial bench card. This actually started out as a beach book, I think, Katie. So we had, we had all these dream big ideas and we're trying to whittle that down to something that. A judge could refer to as far as maybe some questions to ask for some things to, to look at as they're looking at a youth aging out of care. One of the big things on here is obviously essential documents. OCSA funding, we encourage all of our youth to start accessing OCSA funding while they're in care. And if they're not accessing the funding, we want to know, you know, is it just because you don't know about? Is there a barrier to it? Something like that. Permanent connections. You know, we're always talking about the legal permanency, which, which we should, but also our focus needs to be on the relational permanency as well. I feel like it's equally important. Necessary referrals, mental health referrals, SSI, DDS, things like that. We want to make sure that if there is a need. There is a referral in place and that need's going to be met. Transition planning, talk a little about that, educational goals, I'm going to track for that. And the foster, foster youth bill arrives, we want to make sure that all of our youth have that as well and. And know what they're, what they're entitled to and what this should be given. Our focus on, that's really our focus for the fourteen and seventeen-year-olds on this, or fourteen to seventeen, I should say. So for seventeen-year-olds, we really want to focus in on that transitional planning process and see what's in place on that and that those meetings are occurring. And that we're working to a viable plan for when the youth exits this, exits care and particularly with a solid housing plan. So you guys have any questions?
How long has OCSA been around?
Goodness, well, before my time. I think, I think it started back in. Let's say late eighties.
Let me tell you, wonderful briefing, by the way. Wonderful, thank you. Here's the frustration. I've never amazed, I've never ceased to be amazed as a foster parent at hearing about these wonderful programs out there that nobody tells us about. This makes me want to pull my hair out. I'll tell you why. I have a daughter, foster daughter. We got her when she was fifteen. And she wanted to be a nurse. She graduated high school, but in city originals where she was when we got her. We kept her down there. She wanted to be a nurse, an RN. And so we started going through the steps of helping her get in college and. I knew nothing about OCSA, never heard of it, never, never heard the name, never, nobody ever mentioned it. I, I could tell you, OCSA from Oklahoma State. And so she chose OCU, the most expensive nurse in school in Oklahoma. Imagine what that set us back, but we got her in it. She couldn't get financial aid because they demanded that she have tax returns. Well, she, her parents' tax returns. Well, she doesn't have any parent tax returns. Her parents probably have filed any taxes returned. So. So we're, she doesn't get any help. We don't get any help. And then I constantly, over the years, I've been, like I said, I've been here twelve or fifteen years. I'm constantly amazed at the wonderful programs Oklahoma has and the foster parents on the foster children never know biddly about it.
Yeah, and, and that's outreach, outreach has, has been an issue for this program. And I, and I can, I can promise you, next month I'm going to get a phone call, more than one, from a young person and has nothing about our program yet. Yet they're eligible for it, yet they're, you know, eligible for our ETV scholarship.
We have to do in this state, we, you know, I'm retired from law enforcement, I'm in business now. This is equivalent to having a business that has got a great business plan. We got great products and services and we never put a sign out to tell anybody. That's, that's what we do here. So I mean, this is wonderful, but it doesn't do any good if the people who make it happen for these kids. Or the kids themselves don't even know it exists, you know?
Well, and the primary way that kids and families and foster parents know about this is through their permanency worker, right?
Yes, yes, Keith.
And I think that's your, that's what I've seen as the biggest barrier. It's overworked, understaffed, self-willful workers. Who don't know how or, or don't.
Or they're new or something.
They're new.
You need a resource book, you know?
Yeah, and we, we really want to focus in on. These trainings, I, I see, I see this path opening up and, and just getting more knowledge out to. I don't want them to feel this as, as, you know, more, as Daniel said, they are, they are swamped right now as it is. So I don't want, I don't want to create more work for them. I want to be there to help do some of that work, help, help.
For the workers, you mean?
Yes, absolutely.
Well, again, based on my anecdotal experience, that's again, your biggest barrier is. Well, not, not necessarily some of the knowledge, but some of it is I've got to keep these kids safe. I've got court tomorrow. I can't spend. Half an hour developing their life plan, you know?
But for him to have to fund this youth in care's college, that to me is, I mean, I work for both agencies and I. That's unheard of, that you had to assume that responsibility.
How else? I mean, how else is it going to happen? We don't know about this kind of thing. You go to financial aid at Oklahoma City University and they say, we need your tax returns. Well. We can't get her parents' tax returns. Well, sorry.
And when there's something passed, they were working with kids in care. Remember that? We had a speaker in here one time and I think it was ages for Thursday, remember? Yeah, okay, so a girl went to college and she was doing so good, but they're like, why aren't you attending Thursday classes? She's like, I don't have any. And they're like, that's what that R is on your, your college schedule. And she's like. I have no idea. And so we kind of changed, looked at that and they changed college. Orientations, I think it was, to bring them in and really explain those things and recognize you were in foster care. And here's more resources we have. But like colleges should know about this too.
Yeah, there's a network now where all of the major colleges and universities have, I mean, they've been educated about it. So financial aid offices now. Should be telling people about those resources.
Yes.
If the kid self-identifies.
Yeah, they've got it self-identified.
No, I think it's a question, but they, they can like deny it, you know, but if they identify it.
Meet up in here, but that's a great program. You did a great job.
Yeah, absolutely.
The good news, this girl, by the way, graduated. She's an RN and is pursuing a nurse practitioner.
I, I, I hear what you're saying and I do. Understand, I don't work for DHS, so I, but I'm very protective of workers. So when I hear people say things like, oh, it's the worker's fault, I get really, you know. Hot about it because of what is the amount of responsibility that's placed on them. I really think that. Has got to move into a shared responsibility. And obviously I, I work for a foster and adoption association. So communication is a big part of our, our purpose and what we're really passionate about is getting that message out and sharing that responsibility. With DHS to get that information out. And, and I think as foster parents, like the message that we need to start. To, to eliminate that frustration is the message is that we have to, as soon as a foster parent becomes a foster parent is saying, okay, what communities are you? Are you a part of? You know, what groups are you a part of? What support groups? Because that's really where you're going to learn about OCSA. Because out of the thousand things that DHS has to tell you, they're going to forget one. There, and, and if it happens to be an important program like that, that stinks. But it's like, we have to. Encourage foster families to find that community from the very beginning so that that doesn't happen because you, she shouldn't have gone through that. You should have had to have gone through that frustration. But we, we pile so much on, you know, this poor worker, low, low-level worker. And it's like, man, like there's no way they're going to remember all of it because there's so much that these kids. So many programs out there and so many opportunities that just aren't. So I just get really like, oh, but we have to all take that responsibility so that. So that doesn't end up happening.
It's not the worker's fault. Bless their heart. They've got eighty kids are taken care of, you know, and they're just trying to hustle from one visitation to the next.
The simple things. Keith and I were in Comanche County at Foster Parents Group a couple of weeks ago and I brought up independent living. How many of these people had heard of it? None of them. None of them. And they had teenage kids. And I said, well, you need to get your teenagers started in this.
Yeah, so the solution is doesn't rely on remembering, but give you the resources. So you're like, okay, teen years, college, like let me look at everything I have. You're right. We all know there's some really good workers that get a bad, but they get bad names. There's some really poor workers.
Well, it just seems to me like there could be a system in place. I mean, when, when things start happening, what you do is you develop a system. I had an experience much like David with. With a child of mine who knew nothing about independent living, had not had an independent living assessment, did not have any independent living plan. So yes, I, I, I feel, I feel your pain because I went through that as well. And but, you know, in the court system, when something continues to fall through the cracks, we develop a system. We put it on a court minute so that it doesn't fall through the cracks. So somebody's noticed about it. So I don't think I understand why we can't have a system in place. And listen, I get mailing card copies of stuff is, is archaic. I get that. But if we just have a system in place where when a kid gets seventeen or sixteen or whatever, there's a mandatory mailing, comes out from DHS. Goes to the foster home and it's a packet that says, here's what you're entitled to. I mean, it doesn't, I mean, you know, I, I just feel like there's a system that needs to be in place. Rather than relying on these low-level workers that have a thousand things that they must tell you.
But I guarantee you there is a system for this. I don't know what you're, you. But it's still, I think those, those things are still going to fall through the cracks. I mean, even if it was mailed to you. It, there's a good chance you're not going to see it and still suffer those.
I mean, I don't know. I think, I don't want to speak for you, but I mean, I think if we got something in the mail on a shiny glossy thing like this that said. Your kid's about, your foster child's about to turn sixteen, here's what they're entitled to, we'd be like, well, how about that? That's going to save me tuition.
If DHS just had a calendar award that said, hey, this child's seventeenth birthday is here or it's eighteenth birthday. Let's send this to the foster parents. I mean, that's pretty simple.
But isn't that, I'm sorry. Isn't that also something that the local parbs could be aware of and do? I mean, isn't that recommendations that we could be giving? This is great to hear this here. I knew nothing about it. I have two parbs in two different counties that I have. You know, a lot, I mean, I'm making notes. Does this DHS worker know about this because of this kid or whatever? And I'm thinking, you know, I mean, why can't, why, to your point, why does everything fall on DHS? If we're doing our jobs, we should have the resources to be able to say this to you. Unfortunately, the local, the, the local parbs don't know about this kind of stuff either. I mean, I know because I'm here. If I wasn't here today, I wouldn't know about it.
You, you make a great point, but I'm just telling you from a foster parent's point of view. I've been a foster, a foster parent for years, never heard a parb. Never heard of it.
That's also an issue.
Just never mentioned to me one time in several years that parb was even a thing.
But that's, that's also, you really don't want to get me started on that one. But that's also. A little bit on parb too. Parb has to, thanks to Daniel, we have that relationship now, but you have to, you have to ask and you have to pester them. To get foster parent information. And, and I mean, it took me two years to do that. And now my foster parents get a notice before we have a meeting, here's a form or please come, you know, one or the other, I need to hear from you. And I think if we, if we as parb boards, or maybe a little bit more proactive. And, and would try to build a relationship with our foster parents. I know it's, I know it's not easy. I know. But if somehow we could do that and we could get the information in their hands, or if nothing else, we could put it on our recommendations and the judge could say it in court. I mean, there's that.
May, may I speak just on this matter for a second? So like, it is great if we were to able, were able to send out this information. But also our benefits that our young people get, even when it comes to education, they are complex. So it is kind of case by case. It does determine on how long a young person was in care. Did they leave care through legal permanency? Whether that's adoption and guardianship. So like I said earlier, my position is a transition coordinator for OCSA. I am the only one. And I would love to, you know, really like be in there and have those conversations and explain to our foster parents. What this young person is eligible for and really like explain it to them, give them that information. And that's something that OCSA wants to do. Definitely want to get in there and spread this information. And it's just, and we know our workers. They're, they are so busy. They've got their hands tied with a lot of different things. We would love. We would love to assist them more.
Right, but if you just had, I mean, seriously, something that goes out that says, you may be entitled to benefits. I mean, just like every other. You may be entitled to, to tuition, inquire here at this website or call this number. We would be calling it.
We do, we provide our foster parents and our young people with that information during that, like that ninety day transitional plan. But again, it's too late at that point, so we're trying to start earlier at seventeen. And those, those transition meetings include everybody. They're supposed to include everybody and OCSA is supposed to be a part of that. And if OCSA is not invited or not a part of it, we can't explain that to them. So we just want like, if we had more, more me to be able to go and explain it, I think it would be greater. And especially, even if we could start earlier than that seventeen year, that would also be very good.
Do you think schools know who the foster kids are?
Yes.
Maybe school counselors might be an avenue to attack too. I, I don't know. When I was in high school, a long time ago, I knew that as a counselor, I had no idea what they did.
They, they don't.
Some dumb, depends if they're on the radar for being in trouble, honestly.
I've, I've gone to school with some of my foster kids before, and if we kept them in the school that they were in. They, they, I'd show up to check them out or whatever, like, who are you? You know, they, they don't have any idea, and especially if it's, you know, like this girl I was talking about, she's black. But you can imagine the looks I get when I show up to.
Love to get with you and see if you wanted to do something with our, our group, uh, like a live you.
Well, you know, there's no question the transitions have been a huge issue. It's, it's a huge issue for OJA. It's just. A lot smaller than it is for DHS, but you know, trying to find a path for these kids. Where they don't end up out on the street. It's just a difficult, difficult problem. There's a lot of solutions being thrown around and, and it's just getting that information to the right people. It's just difficult, like you've never heard of OCSA. I've heard of them because I ran into them at different conferences where they had tables, you know, and asked them about what they do, but. Uh, it's a, it's a big deal and that brings us to, if there's no more questions. Item seven, PARB transition, and thank you, Jeff. And well, uh, very lively discussion on that. Uh, Kim and Christina?
All right, Kim's on video.
Yeah, yeah. Good morning, everybody. How are you all? Um, you will have to forgive me for my title. Uh, I, well, this board was named. Independent Living when I took over, uh, the coordination of the board several years ago. But it's also the vernacular that I've grown up using. We kind of shifted to, uh. Using more of the term OCSA than we did independent living services a few years ago. Um, unfortunately, that title stuck with our board and so at some point I probably need to change it. But, uh, yeah, we have several, well, we had, right before Keith asked me to write up a little summary on this. Uh, we had one of our members resign unfortunately, Courtney Noah. And so we currently have four members, but we have five or three pending applications. And I noted those individuals that are, uh, make up our board. We have some wonderful, wonderful resources. I don't know if any of you all are familiar with Robbie Wheat. But she is incredible. She has done, I put together, uh, a training for PARB. Um, a couple, well, it was in December, which, uh, Robbie presented it. And no matter how many times I talk to her about services, no matter how many times she contributes in our meetings, I still learn something new every single time. So, uh, she's great. Um, I think probably our purpose is fairly explanatory. We review cases for children that are fourteen years of age or older. Um, that have not achieved permanency. They could be in a potential permanent home. Uh, but they just, the, either the adoption or the guardianship obviously has not been finalized yet. We also, uh, review cases in which there has not been a permanent home identified. Uh, we kind of take two tracks when we're reviewing cases. Uh, we are looking to see what avenues toward permanency have been explored. And why those avenues maybe have either been successful or not, just to make sure we are covering bases. Uh, such, because I, I think Daniel mentioned it, um, in his presentation, I'll mention it again. I think with this particular population, we have to be creative. Um, it, we have to be creative in what we're looking for and the solutions we're using and how we approach it. In addition to doing this, I also represent kiddos and I actually have happened to have a little niche where I, I love representing teens. Um, I don't particularly like raising them, um, but I like representing them. And, uh, I think one of the things generally I will tell you that we've tried to do. Within Tulsa County PARB is, it was mentioned a minute ago to bring foster parents into the mix. Um, our PARB members, as part of every case review, reach out and speak to the foster parents if they are willing to speak to us. Now, sometimes, um, they don't return calls or sometimes they're not sure where we are and we kind of have to go through that explanation. But we do try to bring them into the fold so we can do a little bit of educating both ways. Uh, and so it's been challenging because we don't have, somebody asked about PARB reaching out to foster parents. The only way we can get that information is through DHS. Uh, and so my volunteers have to specifically request the foster parent contact information from the work. And I will tell you, most of them are very good when they're, uh, about providing it. But I would love to brainstorm away if, if the board wants, you know, if anybody's ever bored and wants me to. Brainstorm a way for us to be able to easy, uh, gain easier access to foster parent contact information. Because, uh, it is difficult and in those cases where we may not hear back from the. Um, DHS worker, which I'll admit is, is not often, uh, then we absolutely have no way to obtain that information. But, uh, we then look at whether or not all available services for, uh. Kiddos that fall within this age range of fourteen years that are being provided. Uh, and so that involves a heavy understanding of, um, OCSA services and what's available. And so we try to focus a lot of training throughout the year on that. I don't know, Keith, is there a way to scroll down on my screen for some reason? The bottom part of my thing is cut off. There we go. Thank you. Um, so some of the trends or issues that we've seen, uh, I think it was again hit on by Daniel. And I've been doing this for a long time, like almost twenty years within this community, the child welfare community, if you will. And we had a big, big push for several years for the kind of like. Five, but particularly three and under population. Uh, best practices and, and baby courts, if you will, that they were typically called and, and really gearing ourselves on. Uh, you know, trauma related behaviors and, and therapies, et cetera. I love the fact where now I feel like it's the first time in my career that I've seen a much, much. Uh, better increase or more focus on this population aging out and I, I love it. Uh, I think that occasionally we put too much focus on permanency instead of safety. I've represented several clients that have no desire to be adopted or put in a guardianship. And funny enough, of all the ones that I can recall, recall off the top of my head. That had that position when I represented them as an attorney, all of them had a condition of abdication. Uh, in fact, the one client that I currently represent now, um, still, uh, same situation. And it's taken us, uh, four years of intensive work and therapy. In search to get him into what is maybe a potential adoptive home. Um, so again, being creative, um, with this population. Uh, of course, staying within the bounds of the law, which. I don't know how many of you are aware of this, but once upon a time when a, uh, parental rights were terminated to a child. There was an in run sometimes that we would use to get around that. By, uh, the courts would later consider the potential of a guardianship with that parent. Uh, there, that loophole was legally closed, I would say, oof, three, maybe four years ago now that prevents that option. So termination for parental rights for teens really should be considered very differently than that of younger kids. I think we talk about that a lot as a board when we're looking at recommendations. Uh, and, and the reason being is that. While we recognize that a teen may not be able to return to a parent safely at that time, that doesn't mean that that might make change at some point in the future. And we don't want to close off potential permanency options for these kiddos by maybe terminating either prematurely. Or unnecessarily, especially when the child, you know, doesn't want parental rights terminated. So we talk about that, uh, challenges, I think, is getting kids, um, in this age group to engage in these services. Uh, I'm, I'm not quite sure, we see a lot as PARB members talking to the DHS workers. That the DHS workers have a hard time engaging these children, this population into services. Uh, they may be aware of it, they'll sit down and talk to them, they'll do my transition plan, they'll do their ninety day plan, they'll do all that, but. It's hard to get them to focus and be an advocate for themselves. Uh, it's also challenging because right now, and Dana, you can correct me if I'm wrong, and I certainly don't mean, but I've seen a larger. I've seen more turnover within the department probably in the last year, well, really since COVID started. Than I have seen in a really, really long time. And it's, it's hard to keep, when you're losing those workers, it's hard to keep that knowledge thread going. And so you get new workers and they're great, their hearts in it, but you know, they barely get through learning. Or maybe learning about these and then either they leave or their supervisor leaves or whatever, which is rare, I know that the workers. But it's hard to maintain that knowledge base when the turnover is, is greater. And it's harder to engage those teens when you have workers that don't ma- maybe specialize within this population. Once upon a time, there were some units out of Tulsa County that, uh, they called independent living unit, uh, worker units. That were made up of DHS workers that specialized in working with this population. And they kind of did away with that a little bit, um, but I thought it was wonderful. Uh, and I say do away with that, I don't know that they formally did away with it, but those units, um, kind of. They were like five workers on a unit that all did this, and I think they worked to disband them across multiple units. Um, but again, with changing and turnover and stuff, that kind of led to, I think, a dissolution of, of that particular focus. And I thought it was really good when we had workers that, um, specialized, if you will, in working with this population. So we as, uh, PARB members do talk to the workers a lot when we do our interviews for our reviews about. You know, are you aware of the services? We will provide a lot of information. Uh, we will provide Robbie Wheat's name and contact number, we'll provide it to the court. We kind of go through a checklist in each meeting on these cases of has this been done, has this not been done, where are we? Uh, so that we're giving the court as much detailed information as possible. And I think that covered kind of my trends and issues and what we're seeing.
Thank you, Kim. Appreciate it. Christina?
Hi, everybody. I'm the Oklahoma County PARB Coordinator, Christina Wotley. Um. I kind of copied Kim's model a little bit and then just, you know, put the issues for Oklahoma County. Uh, I, my, uh, transition board, as we call it, uh. Very, very great group, headed by, that other than Jeff Walls. Um, and what we've seen, um. And I've noticed this a lot going through, going through cases, um. When all other avenues have been exhausted, I'm seeing. Uh, reach out to their biological parents and reconnecting them with their biological parents. And while, you know, that sounds like a great idea, sometimes it's not always the safest idea. In a, a lot of these older kids, um, I have, and it blows my mind. Uh, now, I also have a mental health board and so, you know, I have to kind of. Uh, weigh the options of what board to assign those to, um, but I've noticed a lot of the abandonment. Issues, uh, like they're getting ready to come out of Cedar Ridge. Or, you know, or detention. And a lot of them, and they're abandoned by their adoptive parents. They, they don't want them anymore. They can't control them. They've developed all these behaviors and it makes me sad, really. Uh, and then, you know, DHS has to step in and it takes that child a while. Um, just to recover from that. Um, you know, not only are they just coming out of an impatient placement, uh. And, you know, their biological parents gave up on them a long time ago and now they're adopted parents and, you know, abandon them. And so they have all these issues, but that being said. Uh, one thing that, that I've noticed one, when putting files together or the board to review. Um, is lack of documentation, uh, in, in, uh, in their service plans and it doesn't mention OCSA. I go through it all. If you've had a kid that's sixteen years old, well, they should have already started OCSA services. Um, and there's no mention of it in the, in the court file. So we have to do a little bit of digging there, um, trying to get more engagement with DHS. Uh, as far as providing us current information, uh, because the court file only goes as far as the last court date. And sometimes those court dates are three, four months and we don't know what's happening in between that time. So I'm trying to get DHS more involved. Uh, we were assigned a, um. A liaison, Cecilia Knox, but she really hasn't been participating much. So I rely on Jeff a lot to get their independent living plans and stuff like that. Um. I'm about three days away from actually getting access to OnBase. Uh, so I can be pulling out that information and the board will have it beforehand. Uh, but I don't have to rely on Jeff to get us the information. Um, but yeah, and, and I, and I am seeing a lot of them. That are reconnected with their biological family. One, one youth in particular, and I won't mention his name. He's been in custody since, uh, two thousand nine. Uh, he's sixteen now and he has had over thirty placements. Um, a lot of impatient stays and they reconnected him with his biological mother. Um, who, you know, abandoned him when he was two years old or however old he was. Um, and he doesn't want to do any kind of independent living services. He, he wants to age out and go live with his mother. And his worker, a very good worker, has tried and tried, you know, to talk to him about OCSA services and what benefits he has. I, I, I hate when that happens, but, um. So, I mean, OCSA is just really, really important. And we really do need to get the word out more, uh, because these kids deserve a chance. To have a productive life outside of DHS custody. So. That's about all. We're just rocking and rolling.
Christina, does anyone have any comments, questions, or any, any follow up from Kim or Christina's presentations?
Keith, I just had one quick thought for an immediate fix. Is on our online portal on PARB, you know, the boxes that they check, just add as youth over the age of fourteen. Like, and then OCSA pops up. I know that doesn't fix everything, but at least it flags PARB boards to, you're like, oh, I don't know what that is.
We need to get a couple more. I mean, we didn't have measurements, but.
Kim, you're, I'm muting you. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought she was talking to somebody else.
It wasn't a discussion, I just thought.
Kim, did I interrupt you? I thought you were.
Don't worry about it though. No, no, you're good, you're good. Go, please, go ahead.
Okay, all right. Now that I clearly have the floor, I'll link up a couple of comments. One is, and I hope it's obvious to everybody who, who are volunteer members are in some of these PARB boards. We couldn't do it without these DHS workers, uh, current and retired. They definitely lead, um, you know, the, the PARB boards for Tulsa and Oklahoma County that focus on transition stage youth. And that's also true, um, in rural counties. Our first two people out of, are all three, I think, are DHS folks. Logan County, um, Georgiana, um, Duty, um, she, um, one there. She makes sure that the family tree, we have a place to meet all the time. Um, and it's just always supportive and a huge, huge, I mean, not single any one individual out, but. Um, you know, please pass on like, you know, the, thank you to all our DHS folks. Um, and just to remind you all, we have some, some of the new folks, um, in Oklahoma County and Tulsa County, we do have specialty boards. Um, not just transition, but in Oklahoma County, we've got mental health. Um, not just transition, but in Oklahoma County, we've got mental health, domestic violence, and Indian child welfare. And, uh, yes, um, and then in Tulsa, it's domestic violence and transition, right? Those two, so that, which one? Pick one. Okay. Anyway, carry on.
Okay, gets us to item number eight, call for actionable items to address the transition age youth and child welfare custody. Uh, as we've heard today, there's, it's a complex issue with all kinds of different ways to address these issues, and certainly communication, uh, getting that word out is, is always difficult when there's programs that are outside of the agencies. Uh, but does anybody have any comments about that, or any ideas about some actionable items that you can work on to address, you know, transition age youth?
I like Haley's idea, I think that.
I do.
And also, do that pretty quickly on my portal.
Right, yeah.
Not that it fixes it, but at least it draws our attention to it.
But also, if we can do a training, an online training for the PAR, at least the PAR chair, so they can get the message. I can take this back to my PAR, it's not a problem. Maybe Mr. Wells and Katie would like to come to the lot and then do like we have done, Keith and I have been to several different foster parent group meetings since December. And they don't know this stuff. And if they know that we've got other people coming with this topic, we probably would get quite a few foster parents involved. If you'd be willing to come to one of their foster parent meetings.
Anytime.
And I'd like to say, consider strengthening youth custody and transition, our committee, considering that a resource, I'm gonna start working more with Keith about knowing what issues you guys are seeing, so that I can bring that to that group, because we're really working on that systems level. And so I'm already thinking, just a numbers game here. Uh, one thing strengthening could do is maybe talk, educate the actual universities about when they have foster youth come to them. You know, that's much easier, there's a lot less of them than there are foster parents or workers or any of that. So if you guys see anything like that, feel free, you know, keep bringing that to me, but I'll also check in as well to see how we can help you all with what you're seeing.
Actually has, has already implemented for the last several months on our reports, you know, has this child have, have essential items he's going to need as the ages out. So we've already started including that. But not, that's only because I knew that, and not all PARs. Like, many.
No, go to every committee, but I, I'll work with Keith and, and probably show up occasionally, just so I kind of know as well that we wanna be a resource to use as well.
In our county, we have a foster, a foster closet, and they're going to start, they just opened this last year, but they're gonna start doing continuing ed classes. Is that like a subject that can be used for continuing ed for foster parents?
I'm sure we have anything to take in action.
Nah, I don't think so.
It was a good discussion. Thanks for bringing this up. It's certainly something that DHS is really putting a lot of effort into to make these transitions meaningful. We, we're trying to do the same thing at OJA on a smaller scale, but we've got these same issues on kids that are gonna age out of custody, that really don't have a place to go back to, uh, but they're way beyond foster care, and just trying to figure out how to not, you know, take kids to the Jesus house when they age out. Just have a complete failure of that case all the way through when, when we end up with homeless kids. So it's a big issue to the agencies. And I know it's, it is to us, and DHS obviously really giving it some serious thoughts, so it's hard work.
Yeah, I had a couple ideas just about that, communication too. I was texting someone, I responded, you had to see if we have the kind of what you mentioned, the in-service training hours for foster parents. Do we have one that's specific about OCSA, so foster parents can take it online? I don't know, y'all may know, you know.
I don't think we have anything in place.
Yeah, we don't have anything specific, Daniel. We, we've, we've done, um, through our, uh, partners at NR-CYS, which is still under the OCSA umbrella, they've done a thing called, um, OCSA connects. And again, um, it's just put out through Facebook. I don't know how many folks we've reached, what I'll tell you is not a whole lot of people attend the live session. But we do see that it's, they're gaining views, like they're able to review that, so. Um, and those cover a variety of topics, um, how much of it is specific to the transition part. Um, I would say all of it is, but, but to what degree is kind of debatable. Um, but we don't have anything actually like in place where we're going out to do like a reoccurring type of briefing or training with foster parents.
Yes, so I'll, so that's something we could explore. No, I'll get Stacy Bates to connect with y'all, because we could create an online training, so foster parents that can take it, you know, oh, this applies to me now, I have a teenager now. Um, goes for that further. I know I see communication from OCSA to the workers about, you have a youth in your caseload who's fourteen, eligible, all that. Can you talk about, just real quickly, like the frequency of that, and then does, could we craft a similar message to the foster parents? Maybe?
Well, I know that, um, OCSA generates an email whenever a, a youth turns fourteen, just saying, hey, we've been identified with having a young person this age, um, just kind of briefly goes over like OCSA and telling them to do their, um,
The, the life skills assessment?
Yeah, the life skills assessment, um, and then they, they send out these reoccurring emails, um, and sometimes their workers, you know, they, they get all these different emails, so, um, I know OCSA is really just kind of a little bug, they could send in those emails, um, and that, that's kind of like the window, um, for our workers to reach out and ask questions. Um, another thing, um, myself, I've been trying to send targeted emails to our workers and our supervisors who've been identified with having a transition age youth on their case. Um, unfortunately, I've only been able to kind of reach them anywhere from sixty to ninety days before they turn eighteen, um, because I'm just sending those emails out myself. Um, so I'm trying to get in there saying, hey, um, have you been in contact with OCSA as far as your transition plan? Um, has OCSA been a part of that transition plan? Because we want to be able to spread that information. Um, that way the young person gets the information, they're supportive adults get their information, the foster parents. Also, the workers, sometimes the workers don't know all this information, so it's just good to, to spread it to everybody that's a part of that young person's transition. Um, so that's what we're doing, um, just maybe speak a little bit more on those like emails that go out. I know it goes out like at fourteen, then again at sixteen.
Sixteen, yeah, so those are the notifications for the life skills assessment. That should occur on that fourteenth birthday or shortly after, and then again at sixteen, as those skills have changed by then, the goals have changed by then. And, um, the life skills assessments, really, it's a, it's a point in time from the youth perception of what skills they have right now. And based off that assessment, it generates, these are some things that you may be wanting to focus on, maybe wanting to work on. And from that assessment, that's where the plan for my future is actually built, which this is not the ninety day plan, this is just a plan that a fourteen-year-old could jot down some stuff, or a sixteen-year-old, regards to seeing things on there like, uh, get a driver's license, or things like that. Um, and off of that plan, that's how they access the, the youth development funds, or the, the OCSA helpline funds. Um, so for instance, we've, we've bought youth that go, um, girls in a four H program, she needed a goat, gotta go. Um, so those, those type of things occur at those, at those ages. Um, and Daniel, if I'm, if I'm reading right, I think, I think what you're saying is we, we could do a an email at the same time to that foster parent and say, this youth is now eligible for this. Just provide, I think that's a outstanding idea.
You could click here for the website, ask for a worker about it, make something come out, something like that.
Yeah.
Because for most foster parents have emailed this before.
Guys, let me just, again, reiterate, I don't want to go along here, so I, I'm not gonna stay on the soapbox anymore, but remember this. Uh, it's not just about the foster kids, my bio kids are this way. You set the fourteen-year-old down and start talking about a ninety-day plan, he's thinking about Fortnite. You're right, getting this information to them, you buy, very rare, it's a very rare child that will pay any attention to that. You gotta get that to the foster parents. We can be the ones that, you know, uh, make sure it happens.
Yeah, that's what we're discussing, it's how to troubleshoot that, get it to the foster.
And as a part, long time part member, and retired, so I, I don't, I certainly know all of the updated things, and I'm out of that loop somewhat, but Daniel and Jeff, on PAR, because we talk to foster parents, if we find a foster parent or have a child that's fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, or seventeen, eighteen, trying to go to college, and we find that the foster parent can't navigate how to get that child the, the resources to get him into col- him or her into college. Where do we go? Where do we tell them to do?
They contact their worker or OCSA. And most of the time, the, the worker I can see is gonna reach out to OCSA too, because you gotta remember in context too. It's a smaller population of kids that any worker plus estate is gonna be working with. Most of their kids they work with are gonna be younger kids, because if you break it out, right, so they're gonna need help too, the workers will be like, okay, like, how do I navigate this? So that's.
But OCSA can navigate that foster parent, or that worker, how to get the resources.
Has to all flow through the caseworker. I'll tell you why, it's the only person we have any contact with, that's the only person we've ever met in the system. Uh, we haven't met anybody else at this table, or anybody, any, any representative of any agency. The only person we ever deal with as a foster parent is that caseworker, and we can only know what they know. That's it. And until we can get it down to where they don't have eighty kids piled on their caseload.
That's not a thing anymore, they don't have any kids anymore.
Well, when did you last foster? Now.
Where are you? Um, waiting to get, I haven't had that in years.
Well, I'm, I'm, again, I'm not saying every, every caseworker has eighty kids, but I'm telling you, when a caseworker tells me, you know, it, it's going great here, I'm not gonna visit because I've got this kind of caseload, it's eighty kids, that's all I, that's all I know, you know. Were they lying? I don't know, that's what they told me.
Yeah, it sounds like it. Yeah, no one has any kids, I assure you of that.
I do have a question about, uh, extended service. So I know you guys focus on kids that are currently in, in the system, still foster. Have you guys ever had any, um, discussion about expansion to post-adoptions? Um, I have five, I have a teen now, and four that will be up and coming, and I think some of these resources would be absolutely beneficial. Um, obviously, that's a much larger population, and that may not even be on the table, but do you?
So, so eligibility for, for, um, say, youth who exited care through adoption, that would have had to have occurred, occurred after their sixteen birthday to be, and that's the federal regulations to be eligible for that. Those are funding the OCSA services. So adoptions that would have occurred before then, they, they just wouldn't be eligible for the program at all. So outreach, um, to, to, for that, that, those conversations, and again, you know, this is a matter of, of training and things like that. Making the staff aware that, that while they're, they're going through that adoption process, that the, the parent's aware of, this is what can occur, you know, when this kid's ready for college, or when this kid turns eighteen, um, things like that. So what are, what are connections to those youth look like? Is, we don't necessarily know about them until they call our helpline. So all this information is being provided, uh, it should be, be, being provided during, during these um, adoption consultations and things like that, as they work that progress, or that process. So then when they, when they contact our helpline, um, their, uh, cases, uh, it's like an eighteen to twenty-one case, we, we call it. That's when it, that's opened up, and, um, with the initial assessments complete, and at that point, they're eligible to receive any, any funding from that, or the, the education services.
So sixteen?
Sixteen.
Okay.
Sixteen, and then, um, youth who age out of care, they, um, receive all those services with the addition of funding for housing, and then the extended medical until the age of twenty-six. So a person who leaves care before eighteen, those are the, the two, two big things that, that they, they would leave. Or, I'm sorry, would, would not, would, would miss out on essentially. Um, that's, uh, I think it's already been mentioned a, a couple of times, um, the, the adoptions that don't quite work out. That's where we see the issue with that, because at that point, you know, when we're contacted by a nineteen-year-old who was put out or something like that, we don't have an avenue to help them with our funding for, for housing, so we're looking for other, other avenues there, other community partners to kind of share that load.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion about youth in transition or?
Reimagine as online, right? An online training, the life skills reimagine as an online training?
Yes, yeah.
Is there any, like, can only do just for good kids in OJA access?
I believe they would need to be dual, dual custody on that one, at a minimum.
Any thought? Like, would that be beneficial? Like, I think so too, yeah.
When you think of, you know, to be eligible for your services, I gotta be in foster care when they're sixteen. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Yeah, we've got one foster home in OJA, and there's four beds, so a lot of our kids aren't gonna be eligible, but access to that, sure, yeah, yeah. We've got a lot of, well, we've got quite a few kids that age out. Um, with no real solid.
Sure.
And like DHS, our kids, you know, good, bad, right, or wrong, they all want to go home. And, uh, that's a problem for us, because sometimes, you know, their families are pretty primogenetic. They'll be right back in the family business the minute they go home, but, you know, that's, that's where those kids want to go, and.
Yes, where they're gonna go.
They're gonna go.
That's where they're gonna go.
Yeah, I think any of those services for those sixteen-year-old kids we have, and they may not be eligible for the monetary part, some of the things.
But like, would the training just be open, anybody, if it's no cost, like, we'd work on a kids on formation, like, it would really benefit. Yes, it's a good resource.
Sure.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll take a positive.
Yeah.
And I think, I think, um, one of the main reasons why this should be isolated for specifically DHS or duly adjudicated is because I, I really, really wholeheartedly want this to be incentivized, like, I want them to have a definitely benefit from the program, but I want them to feel like they're getting some, something additional with that. And I've, I've seen, um, through a lot of our focus groups and things like that, um, you give them a little bit of money. It's, 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 something magical happens, so.
You know what I mean? If you're in OJA or you're in Michigan, give a carrot to Dangle to, like, hey, let's work through this, and it's a benefit, just, I would think, just information.
Yeah, I guess my vision is that, the, the monetary piece will draw them in, and, and the actual process will be, but that's, that's what happens through that.
The dual custody kids, it's a small number, but it's really kind of a unique subset, I probably agree. Kids that just have just multitudes of issues that are just not an easy solution. As we've been on several staffings in the past with these kids, or they're not really eligible for child welfare placements anymore, and, you know, it's usually mental health stuff, and we really don't have a place to put them that's gonna help them, so I don't know what the solution to that is, but lucky it's a small number. But it's a real problem. I mean, all these kids are gonna age out of both of our systems, but um, sometimes they're not a, not a good situation, you know, and, and I don't want us to be the ones to punch that ticket to DOC if we don't.
Right, like, if they're in detention, they could watch this and benefit, you know.
But it's, it's a tough deal, DHS has just got hundreds, you know, they've just got a few.
Yeah.
Yes, here we share.
Yeah, it was tough. There's just no good answer. Um, item nine.
Well, and, you know, we're recording this meeting, I'll go make sure and, uh, try to capture any thoughts, recommendations, and bring them back to this group. Great, great discussion, and I think we did successfully set the stage. We got what DHS is doing, what OCSA is doing, what this joint committee is doing, and like you said, we'll keep that relationship going. Um, and then what PAR individually is doing. Um, so, one of my report real quick. Um, so you, y'all met Brandy, Linda, and, uh, Judge Larson. Glad to have you, very excited you're here. Um, they've got, um, Brandy and Linda has some very, um, high-functioning boards that are wonderful. That's why I recommended them, why you guys said yes. Um, been doing some outreach, and gonna have a kickoff pretty soon in Pishmontah County, and in Logan County, we got three new members. And Judge Joel said we'll have a couple others, and gonna get a kickoff started there too. After a lot of efforts, finally gave up trying to make Cherokee and Carter County work, just couldn't get judicial buy-in. So until we have new deprived court judges there, we, I'm gonna be focusing on that. Um, um, continue to do the, the database rollout. I kind of did a, a look yesterday, and I've got about two-thirds of the boards, of our forty-two boards um, doing the database that you all got trained last month, I think it was on, um, which is exciting, because then we can, um, I can see in real time what the recommendations look like, and honestly, they're better than I, um, imagine they were. I always think the worst, but, um, and started to look at some, um, Excel data, um, yesterday, but didn't have enough to really share with you yet. There's, oh, you're continuing to work on that, but we'll continue to do the rollout on that. And just one little note on a kind of a side effect of that is now, um, I don't think we mentioned this last meeting, maybe we did, but Christina now is sending of the recommendations in the typed PDF format to all the Oklahoma County juvenile court judges. Uh, they asked for them, so they're getting them directly. So this, the side effect of our new database is more direct communication with the judges on, um, on those recommendations themselves. Um, the annual report request went out for meeting dates and, um, for their recommendations and volunteer hours and, and, um, stuff like that, and I've gotten most of that in. I'm finishing that up, and we'll see that at the next meeting. Uh, Kim held her on, did a couple of trainings, which I kind of skipped over, but also did her volunteer appreciation. I think she had to log off the meeting, um, for Tulsa County members. Partially, mostly because of Sarah's outreach, I was able to to do a little presentation on parv DHS Resource Family Partnerships, which was great. That really helped. And because of that, Cindy Knottson and I are kind of starting the Southwest Oklahoma tour. We've been to two foster parent, was support group the name of it? What would it be kind of a? And then we're going to do, or I got asked to do one, and you don't have to come to this one if you don't want to, we'll do one, and I think Duncan said.
And and you know, Stevens County area, Stevens County is part of that Grady County Chickasha area. And that judge in Stevens County, Duncan, has always been anti-parv. However, the DA there, Jason Hicks, is now on the OCCY board. And I think now maybe we can get that door open just a little bit that we can lose our way right now in there. I'm going to throw that little tool out at Jason.
And I skipped over it real quick. I didn't mean to, but Cleveland County is back up and running. We've got a lot, we're up 11 volunteers since the last meeting about, which is great. This parv's been very tough on our volunteer recruitment. And Millie Carpenter, you remember she used to be on this, she's now one of our newest parv members for Cleveland County. We had a meeting, it was last week, and it went really well. We got seven great members there in Cleveland County and have buy-in from that judge. And that DHS office has been real supportive as well. So I skipped over that. And then I did present at the commission meeting fairly quickly, I guess, when was that? Maybe November, the commission meeting. I did present our recommendation on eliminating jury trials and termination cases. And I think that's continued to sprout legs and I think it can go other places. So just FYI on that. I'm going to be talking with the parent group about that.
Was it well received? Is that what you mean by that?
No, not necessarily.
Eternal optimist.
Well, I don't know. I mean, I think the parent group are a little concerned about it.
Yes, there was some concerns brought up, but they're, you know, they're looking at some alternative solutions or kind of more upstream thinking.
Well, and then our legislative liaison, I'm trying to remember where I heard reports from our. Brittany just resigned as our legislative liaison. She had talked to some legislators about the issue as well. And I think they were mixed feelings on that too. I I can't remember any more specifics than that. So that's my report. Any questions?
Any discussion on Pete's report? Okay, we go to item number two, state parv recommendations for our 2021 annual report in your packets.
We just, yeah, just to call this to your attention, not to really spend time on it right now, but just wanted to maybe be your homework assignment, think through some of these. And we'll probably include most of the agendas and things we need to be going over. Because annually, we're supposed to submit recommendations to the commission. We just finished doing that, partially because they wanted us to be more specific last time. So we just got finished doing that top recommendation, which is that eliminate the right to request a jury trial and termination of parental rights procedures. And we decided, we had this list and we kind of decided just to push that one. But want to see if there's anything that we want to specifically recommend to commission, and next month's meeting will be the time to do that.
I think it looks like we're going to be doing number one again, based on what you've said. The other thing that I was speaking to, I know we got to go, but a couple people about that may be a little bit of a help to us. I'm not really sure, I haven't thought it through yet. But I was speaking to the Choctaw tribe in Durant, shout out. And they, the tribes do not, and I don't, I haven't checked with all of them. But the tribes do not mandate a jury trial for termination of parental rights. So if we can kind of, you know, as this McGirt, I mean, it's been running for a minute, but as it's now solidified, I would say, and half of Oklahoma does not mandate a jury trial for deprived children or for them to be terminated or parents to be terminated. And coupled that with the fact that they require a higher standard of proof, so they require beyond a reasonable doubt to terminate. That might be something that will push some people over the edge a little bit as well. Like you look at these, this population that has a higher standard of proof than non-native children. And the entire eastern half of Oklahoma is doing that, you know, within the reservations. That might be something that would help push people over the line just a little bit in that area. And then the last thing I'm going to say, and I promise I'm going to quiet, is I was talking to Bonnie Cliff the other day, we were discussing it. She brought up the really interesting idea of maybe spoon feeding it a little bit. Those are my words, not hers. But to maybe approach our legislators or commissions or whatever steps we go through with eliminating the right to a jury trial only in their failure to correct conditions cases and leaving it in place on the others. She thought that might be a little more palatable. Number one, those are very difficult cases. If you've ever tried as a DA, I tried a bunch of juries. You have documents this thick and three years of stops and starts and people in and out of lives and everything else. A judge would be more able and capable of 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 ascertaining that, whether those standards were met. And and if it would be even more palatable than like some other process requirements that we have in the criminal law sector, it can be imposed as a two-judge rule. Meaning that whoever's heard all these reviews over and over and over does not get to hear whether termination of parental rights should in fact occur. It has to be a separate judge that hears all of that evidence so that, you know, that judge doesn't remember when Long came in stumbling dropped to her review hearing. So and so anyway, I think there are more ways to, I think there are ways to make it more palatable. Talking to the tribes, and I don't mind if you guys want me to, if it's something, I know we don't have time to talk about it today, we can talk about it later. I don't mind calling around, getting the codes from the, I think we have six now reservations instead of five, I think we now have six, to look at their code, to see how they're going to handle it and and on tribal land. And I I can get that information if we think that would be more palatable. Also, maybe think about spoon feeding it on the one ground instead of all, and consider implementing a two-judge rule.
Yeah, a good idea.
I think the commission would love to hear all that. I think that's.
So if you want me to call around and get the code, I mean, that's not going to hurt anything. I can just do that for my own notification. And if you guys want to see it, implement it later, we can talk about it.
Yeah, okay.
Doctor, do you know what the commission's going to do with this at this point?
No, we were supposed to have a meeting last week, and we didn't meet for them, and so they changed it, and I have not gotten the emergency meeting date yet.
Well, that's a question that's come up to me. It's like, okay, we did our duty, which is handing this to the commission. Does that mean we're done? Well, not necessarily. We we have been on on a, with the people that we know, we can certainly continue to push any issue that we want to.
I think parv will have to continue to carry it. I think the commission gave their blessing per se, but I mean, parv will have to carry that.
Next year, that's what we're going to do.
Just like it's a little wild. There's a lot of child welfare stuff that was submitted. Yeah, there's probably, I would say there's probably a good six between Lawson, Peterson, and then there's a couple representatives that have talked, one's real, real hot, spicy. I can't remember, is it Williams maybe? It's, you guys look it up, it's quite entertaining to read through. But Lawson though, Kaylee has two that I think probably if anything jury trial related will probably be attached to it because it already talks a little bit about, there is a an additional change there that he made, probably between him and Jerry. But yeah, so I mean, even if it's just little baby steps and and getting, you know, making it a little bit more difficult too.
And I don't know if that's something we can do this year. I mean, is it, is it, has the horse left the barn? Should we start, you know, laying the foundation for next year? Or do you think?
I think that's what we did last year. I think the foundation was laid last year. I I really do. Between the GJOC and the subcommittee and I think a lot of it was laid through Chris Calvert's report, things like that. But I think, I think it, yeah.
It's on, okay. And this has been ongoing since I was chair.
Maybe I'm fully, I was going to say. Elimination by.
Sure, we were talking about it. Was on more, I was chair about this, he and I talked multiple times about this, and I was going to come sit before a subcommittee and explain. This has just been an ongoing thing for.
Or it gets stuck.
16 years.
16. It has, no, it has.
What?
Yes, yeah, 16 years ago, this was a recommendation.
Yes. We even, this is a yearly.
Well, then, there you go. No, I think we're ready.
Yeah, it's a groundwork.
We've got some direction. Any further discussion on what we're going to focus on for our next annual report? Item 11, new business. I'm not aware of any new business. If anybody has any new business. Item 12, I guess I'll ask if there are anybody that doesn't want to.
If you have present issues, especially the new folks, and you want to send them my way, please do. We can look at anything. And of course, I'll be, I should have said this earlier, but I'll be compiling all of the recommendations or thoughts from the local boards as well and put those in front of you as well.